Per the State of California Executive Order N-2920, this meeting is being held telephonically. All public comments were received either by email or via voicemail as noted within the agenda. Counsel, please mute your microphones until called upon for comment or vote. Mayor, I'm now passing the mic over to you.
Thank you, Ashley. I'll now call the meeting to order. Roll call, please.
Mayor Smith?
Present.
Mayor Pro Tim Davies?
Present.
Councilmember Wiggins?
Here.
Councilmember Pogan Cord?
Here.
Councilmember Scrivner?
Here.
City Treasurer Curry?
I'm here.
City Clerk Marsh?
Here.
All elected officials are present telephonically.
Thank you all. We have now asked for the Pastor Gerald Fair of Calvary Chapel Church to lead us in a vocation. Pastor Fair?
Father in heaven, we thank you for this evening, Lord. We thank you for the ability to continue to come together. And, Lord, we seek now your guidance, your wisdom, your discernment in the decisions ahead. We thank you for our public officials, Lord, and we just pray your blessing on this meeting. Thank you for our great city and community. May you continue to bless the city of Tehachapi in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you, Pastor. Could join me in the pledge of allegiance? Salute pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We will now go to the consent agenda. All items listed with the asterisk are considered to be routine and non-controversial by city staff. Consent items will be considered first and may be approved by one motion if no member of the council or audience wishes to comment or ask questions. If comment or discussion is desired by anyone, the item will be removed from the consent agenda and be considered in listed sequence with an opportunity for any member of the public to address the city council concerning the item before action is taken. Were there any public comments regarding consent agenda items that should be removed?
There were zero comments received by email and zero by voicemail.
Thank you. Are there any consent agenda items the council would like removed?
Councilmember Pogan Cord?
None. Were there no voicemails? Ashley, you went blank on that, on the consent.
There were not. We haven't gotten to our oral and written communications portion yet, but for the consent agenda, no. There were none.
Okay, thank you, honey.
Councilmember Scrivner?
None for me.
Councilmember Wiggins?
Um, no.
Mayor Pro Tim Davies?
Uh, no.
Mayor Smith?
Uh, no for me. We'll now take a motion to approve consent agenda. Do I have a motion?
I still move.
Uh, roll call, please.
Councilmember Pogan Cord?
Yes.
Councilmember Scrivner?
Yes.
Councilmember Wiggins?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Davies?
Yes.
Mayor Smith?
Yes.
It was a 5-0 vote for approval of the consent agenda.
Thank you all. Audience oral and written communications per State of California Executive Order N-2920. Do we have any public comments?
There were zero comments received by email and zero by voicemail.
Oh, right then. Item number four, dispersals, bills, and claims for RSI Petroleum.
Um, Mayor Smith, this is Councilmember Davies. I need to recuse myself because I'm an employee of RSI Petroleum.
All right, let the record show as such. So, discussion, were there any public comments on this item?
There were zero comments received by email and zero by voicemail.
Thank you. Uh, roll call to ask council members for any comments.
Councilmember Pogan Cord?
And none for me, thank you.
Councilmember Scrivner?
None for me.
Councilmember Wiggins?
No.
Council, or Mayor Smith?
Uh, none for me either. Uh, now ask for a motion to approve dispersals, bills, and claims for RSI Petroleum.
Still move.
I'll second.
Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Pogan Cord?
Yes.
Councilmember Scrivner?
Yes.
Councilmember Wiggins?
Yes.
Mayor Smith?
Yes.
It was a 4-0 vote for approval of the dispersals and bills for RSI Petroleum with a recusal from Councilmember Davies.
Thank you. We can ask Councilmember Davies to return.
Okay, I'm back.
Thank you. Item number six, Parks and Recreation Fee and Civic Facilities Impact Fee. Our assistant to the city manager, Corey Costello, will now give his report.
Thank you, Mayor Smith and council members. What I have for you this evening is a Parks and Recreation and Civic Facilities Impact Fee presentation and adoption of revised and updated Parks and Civic Facilities Impact Fees. Uh, back in December, uh, the council approved a contract with Lahovitz and Singh to perform an impact fee study update for our Parks and Recreation Civic Facilities fees. Uh, that included identifying projects to account for future growth as well as account for any previous expansions aimed at accommodating growth. Uh, our municipal code allows the city to impose a new fee. These are on new developments only as a method for financing the development improvement and enhancement of public parks, recreational, and civic facilities fees. Uh, those fees are collected annually in accordance with the city's improvement plans with fee revenues deposited into restricted accounts. Uh, we were also prepared, as part of this process, we prepare a five-year report on the implementation of these fees, including identifying the purpose and the amount, and then demonstrating that reasonable relationship between the fee and its purpose. Uh, as we are a jurisdiction as well in the Tehachapi Valley Recreation and Park District, uh, the city partnered with TBRPD for an update to both the fees to be borne by developers in the city to account for, uh, regional impact projects for TBRPD as well and ensure that fees charged by the county of Kern via TBRPD for impacts to parks and recreation are relatively consistent. Um, the civic facilities portion of this study is exclusive to the city of Tehachapi and includes both administration and police facilities. Uh, we did have an agreement with Lahovitz and Singh to complete the following, and we did, uh, they worked with the city and TBRPD staff to determine appropriate projects as well as cost sharing. Uh, they determined appropriate planning horizon, which basically the funding term, the completion of those projects, uh, our expected growth and the required capacity or the proposed level of service. Also, they calculated recommended fees based on project costs, uh, net adjustments divided by estimated capacity and scale fees to different land use types as appropriate. So, for example, multifamily developments or single family for the park fee, and then residential versus non-residential for the civic fee. Uh, first with this report, want to inform the council that the work commissioned uh, in December of 2020 is complete and that it's satisfactory to city staff. And, uh, also this report serves to present the results for the final analysis. Uh, for that, I'd like to turn it over to Allison Lahovitz. She's, uh, was kind of our important person on this project, uh, Lahovitz and Singh, and she's going to give a presentation on the, uh, this report and the projects included. So, Allison, take it away.
All right, thank you. Um, yeah, so, um, so I'm Allison Lahovitz. I was the, the lead analyst and project manager on the Parks and Recreation as well as Civic Facilities Development Impact Fees. And I have a brief summary presentation. It should take about 10 minutes, just, uh, giving an overview of our analysis and our report. Um, so, uh, as Corey mentioned, uh, development impact fees are one-time fees paid by new development when building permits are issued. They recover the capital costs of facilities needed to serve growth, um, so as not to burden existing residents. They do not fund routine maintenance or operations, and they're not paid by existing residents at all. It's only for new development. Um, development impact fees are governed by the Mitigation Fee Act. It requires us as the analysts, uh, to establish a nexus between the amount of fee charged and the cost of facilities to serve new development. So, as we mentioned, we determined a planning horizon, determined the, uh, cost of facilities to serve new growth through that planning horizon, and then determined the relative impacts of different types of development on those facilities. Um, so as, as mentioned, uh, the Parks and Recreation Fee has two components, the inside-city share for, uh, city parks and facilities, and then the outside-city share of the county development areas that, um, the Tehachapi Valley Parks and Recreation, uh, district covers. So, uh, the parks fee was last updated in May of 2006. Uh, so the, the fee, uh, update is, is timely. Um, the fee was not updated in quite some time, 15 years or so. Um, and, uh, with the parks fees, they're only charged to residential development. They are not charged to commercial development. So, when we get over to the, the civics side of that fee, um, that is charged to, to both types of development, residential, non-residential development. But parks is only, uh, charged to new homes. So, um, the civic fees cover the cost of city administrative facilities as well as police department facilities, and that was last updated in July of 2009. So, also, a very timely update. Um, and the civic facility fees, um, are charged to single-family, multifamily, commercial, and industrial development. Um, the residential fees are charged on a per dwelling unit basis, and the commercial and industrial fees are charged per thousand square feet of development. Um, so I understand you have, uh, the presentation in the packet. Um, I'm looking at chart six, uh, page six. We worked closely with city staff to develop a list of projects to serve development over the next 10 years. Uh, we identified about 1.6 million of city recreation projects. Um, and then the, the Parks District share is about 2.3 million of projects. Um, and I know, I know there's a lot of detail that goes into each project and how it's going to serve development, um, and a lot of, a lot of those details are in the report. So, we have Warrior Park enhancements, uh, the new gymnasium, which will be heavily funded by grant revenue, um, Central Park bathroom replacement, Bright Lake expansion, Meadowbrook, Phase Four, um, and then some debt service on the Parks District side. For, uh, okay, um, so, uh, like I said, uh, the city share is about 1.6 million, and the Parks District share is about 2.3 million. And then we divide that cost by the expected population growth over the next 10 years, and then get a cost per person. The cost per person is then multiplied by the expected, uh, average number of people per home. And, um, we expect about, about three people for single-family homes and about two people for multifamily homes based on demographic trends. And so that's the, the basic fee calculation, um, shown in chart number seven. So, the, uh, current proposed fees for this inside-city parks fee, it's proposed to increase from about $2,100 to about $3,400 for a single-family, um, about 1,300 for multifamily up to about 2,300. And then, uh, for the Parks District share, um, the current fee for single-family is about 2,100, increasing up to, uh, about 3,000, uh, 3,300 or so. So, there is, there is some increases, but again, uh, the change in the fee recommend, or reflects these new projects that were not conceptualized in the prior fee study. And also, uh, the last fee study wasn't in 2006, so, um, some inflation is well reflected in this fee update. Okay, so, uh, moving on to chart number nine. Um, for civics and police facilities, instead of a 10-year planning horizon, we looked at projects over the next 20 years, and we identified about 3 million in civic projects. So, uh, new public works buildings, civic center master plan, debt service on City Hall, the City Hall Annex, um, and the development share of an event center, the infrastructure-related costs for the event center. And then another big-ticket item was about 3 million in debt service for the police headquarters expansion. So, the total amount to recover, be recovered through the civic fee is about 6.3 million. Um, and then, uh, moving on to chart 10, uh, so we, we looked at population growth over the next 20 years, um, but we also looked at job growth because, uh, the civic fee is applied to both residential growth as well as, uh, commercial growth. And we found that, um, commercial enterprises, uh, do not use civic administrative facilities that heavily, but they do, uh, result in a lot of police-related service calls. So, their impact on, uh, those police facilities was higher than, uh, similar impact of a, a single-family home. So, we needed to look at the, the relative impact of each type of development on city facilities. So, um, wrapping up in chart 11, um, the current civic fee, which includes police, is increasing from about $2,000 to about $3,800 for a single-family, about 1,300 to about, uh, 2,600 for multifamily. And then, commercial and industrial, as I mentioned, are based on, um, thousand square feet of development. Um, commercial increasing from about 2,100 to 3,600, and then industrial from about, uh, 1,000 to about 1,800 for a thousand square feet. And, so I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Were there any public comments on this item?
There were zero comments by email and zero comments by voicemail.
And would you poll the council if they have any questions?
Before we get going on that, Corey has a little bit more to go on his staff report.
I just want to finish this, uh, real quick, and then we can get into the recommendation as well before we go to council member comments. So, uh, thank you, Allison, for the report, uh, and, uh, and the presentation. Uh, you see in the staff report, and Allison covered the proposed increases as well and how those fees are, um, are decided. Uh, so, real quick on the fiscal impact, those, these are all capital accounting funds, and so they're going to capture revenue relating to these fees. And then, uh, basically, as Allison covered, some of those are, uh, cover the debt that's on some facilities that were designed for growth, and, uh, others will be for, uh, new facilities to accommodate, uh, that growth. So, uh, at, at this time, the recommendation is to adopt two resolutions of the city council, the city of Tehachapi, adopting this study by Lahovitz and Singh, updating the Parks and Recreation and Civic Facilities Impact Fees. And just as a note as well, uh, we've mentioned, TBRPD, uh, has been a, a partner in this. They helped fund this study. Uh, they have a, a different process, uh, for their special district to adopt this fee through the county of Kern, and, uh, their board has, has received this report, and they'll be hearing a presentation on it, uh, shortly, and they will go down to, uh, to, to their process to adopt the new fee structure as well. So, we'll be pretty close in the fee developments for the city, uh, and, uh, and the county of Kern for Parks and Recreation.
Thank you, Corey. Now, would you poll the council if they have any questions for Allison or Corey?
Councilmember Pogan Cord?
Um, yes, just to clarify, I know it's, um, not for existing, uh, city citizens, but this is just for the new development, let's say like Sage Ranch or the address or so on and so forth, the new, new development coming in, correct?
Yeah, that goes through developments of residential, for the, for the parks fee. It's for residents, uh, it is for, yes, new developments coming. This does not get charged, uh, the current residents. This is for, when you pull a building permit, you will pay this fee at the counter as part of your building permit, uh, for the city of Tehachapi.
Great, thank you so much. I appreciate that. I just want to make it clear, I, that's what I got, but I want to just clarify it for anybody listening, so, okay, thank you.
Councilmember Scrivner?
None for me, thanks.
Councilmember Wiggins?
Um, no comments about that, but I appreciate all the hard work that staff has put into this.
Mayor Pro Tim Davies?
Uh, I have no questions, uh, again, uh, Councilmember Wiggins. I'd like to thank staff for all their hard work and, uh, taking care of this and doing what they need to do.
Mayor Smith?
Uh, just curious, uh, what are the total fees now with sewer water, uh, school, uh, Parks and Rec? You have a, a ballpark figure to pull a permit on a single-family residence?
Yeah, we're, those are certainly always being updated. I want to say with this increase, yeah, some, some have been, you know, recently, we, recently, we redid the water, and that went down in some cases, but went up for some commercial uses, but went down for residential. Um, I could give you a ballpark, but I don't have the exact fee for everything because there's, there's water and sewer, impact connection fees, there's parks, there's civic facilities, um, and there's a few others, uh, fees that are charged for the, you know, admin function of development services when you pull a permit. So, um, I can give you the ballpark, which would be, uh, you know, 15,000 to 17,000 at this point with these increases. So, which is, which is about half of your larger cities, whether Bakersfield or City of Lancaster that surround us. So, um, with these, even with these increases, uh, we are still, you know, right around that $20,000, sub $20,000 range.
Yeah, that's the point I was getting at, that we're still very much under other cities, uh, for total fees for, uh, for anyone to build a house in the city. And as a reminder, as what Allison said, these are fees paid by, uh, a new home is being built by a developer or, uh, someone building a home. So, with that, I'll ask for a motion to adopt resolution modifying impact fees relating to Parks and Rec facilities for new developments, and to adopt a resolution modifying public facilities impact fees relating to police and civic facilities and providing for annual increases based on the Consumer Price Index. Do I have a motion?
Uh, Mayor, let's, let's do each one separately.
All right. Uh, do I have a motion then for the first one, which is to adopt a resolution, uh, relating, uh, modifying impact fees relating to Parks and Recreation facilities for new developments?
Uh, Mayor Smith, I'd like to make that motion. This is Councilmember Davies.
And I, well, second, second, Pogan Cord.
Thank you. Uh, roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Pogan Cord?
Yes.
Councilmember Scrivner?
Yes.
Councilmember Wiggins?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Davies?
Yes.
Mayor Smith?
Yes.
It was a 5-0 vote to adopt a resolution modifying impact fees relating to parks and recreation facilities for new developments.
Thank you. I'll now entertain a motion to adopt a resolution modifying public facilities impact fees relating to police and civic facilities and modifying for, and providing for an annual increase, uh, based on Consumer Price Index. Do I have a motion?
I still move, Pogan Cord.
I'll second that motion, Christina.
We have a motion and a second. Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Pogan Cord?
Yes.
Councilmember Scrivner?
Yes.
Councilmember Wiggins?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Davies?
Yes.
Mayor Smith?
Yes.
It was a 5-0 vote to adopt a resolution modifying public facilities impact fees relating to police and civic facilities and providing for annual increases based on the Consumer Price Index.
Uh, did we include a price, uh, Consumer Price Index, uh, feature on the first motion, Tom?
Not that I know of.
We, we did not, and going back to, uh, our ordinance that established these, the CPI was only included in the Parks and Recreation portion. Uh, that is something that, and it's in Allison's report, the city had never actually exercised that ability, so we wanted to make sure that we put it, uh, in, in this report and this new adoption, so we were reminded to look at that each year. But that was based on our ordinance back from 2006, when it was established. That was the only, that, that was included. There was not one of those for civic facilities.
Okay, because we just adopted it for both then, is that correct?
No, we just adopted it for the, for the Parks and Recreation. I'm sorry, for, I'm sorry, for, yes, for the civic facilities. I'm sorry, I had those reversed. Uh, we had just adopted it for civic facilities, and that is what was in our previous ordinances that established these fees. That was not included for the Parks and Recreation piece.
Okay, everyone clear on that one?
Okay.
All right.
Yes.
Let's see, uh, item number 10, Code Enforcement Update. This is, uh, information item only. Our police chief, Kent Kroger, will now give the report. Chief?
Good evening, Mayor Smith and council members. Uh, tonight I've asked Officer Aaron Price of our Code Enforcement Division to provide a short presentation on a significant code enforcement project which was recently completed. I believe it was important to share this information with the council and the community, not only to illustrate the great work of our Code Enforcement Division, but also to express how important and effective this work is to improving the quality of life in our neighborhoods. Um, and as the mayor stated, this presentation is for information only and requires no action from the council tonight. And with that, I'll turn it over to Officer Price.
Thank you, Chief. Um, you can go ahead and get started, Corey. This, uh, project began at 315 East E Street. It's, uh, the property has been a, somewhat of a nuisance for Tehachapi Police Department for a number of years. Since we started our department in 2007, our incident log showed 111 records, which means we, obviously, had to come out there quite a bit for a variety of problems. It became known for criminal activity and drug use. In 2015, the property owner had died, and the adult son had taken over. Unfortunately, this resulted in a noticeable increase in incidents that involved the police response and also in the deterioration of property maintenance. Code enforcement came involved on the property maintenance issues, and a number of citations were issued for trash, poor landscaping, loose dogs, inoperable vehicles, and with no change in the conditions. We have some photos here. Obviously, it doesn't look too bad from the front, but go to the next slide. We have, uh, junk and trash, cars which had transient sleeping in them during the time we were working on this. Go ahead, the next slide, Corey. And then, few more slides should give you a little demonstration of what the property looked like. Then, in February 10th of 2020, the Tehachapi Police Department was dispatched to investigate a complaint of drug use and child neglect. A probation search was conducted. We were familiar with pretty much everyone inside the home, and we found a number of disturbing things. Among them, drug paraphernalia was even found hidden inside one of the children's toys at the location. We recovered a large amount of methamphetamine, I believe it was, uh, about eight grams, which is usually indicative of sales. Four people were arrested for charges ranging from possession of controlled substance, possession of controlled substance paraphernalia, child neglect, and maintaining a drug house. On the same day, code enforcement investigated the substandard conditions inside the property. Both the, uh, building inspector and code enforcement deemed the property uninhabitable because of general filth, insanitary conditions, animal feces, and combustible materials covering all of the floors, rotten food left out, and we had an infestation of dead bugs. The property was deemed uninhabitable and posted by both building safety and code enforcement. We have some photos here to show you. I apologize for some of the quality of them. It was unbelievably difficult to get good photos in the property due to how dark it was and how cluttered it was with debris. You can see a space heater on one of these slides, right next to a bed and combustible material causing a fire hazard. This entire room's filled with debris, and dog just sitting in the middle of it. We have, uh, the bathroom filled with debris. We go to, you can see a partial construction project started, which obviously, nothing was ever permitted and ever finished in this home. This is the living room where one of the children was- This is the living room where one of the children was sleeping, which unfortunately, all of these, this furniture was infested with bedbugs. This is a, a child's room, difficult to see in the photo, but just completely filled with debris. Our postings for when we deemed it uninhabitable. Now, due to the repeated drug-related arrests there, including this one for maintaining a drug house, we began the process of initiating a receivership action as permitted in the California Drug House Abatement Act. This was successful in helping us push the owner to sell the property to a third party who agreed to correct all the violations both inside and outside of the property. In addition to this, we recovered $20,000 in cost recovery to minimize the burden on taxpayers because obviously, our time costs the city money, and we try to make sure that taxpayers are not paying for that whenever possible. Here's a photo of the outside of the property, which is now one of the most beautiful ones in downtown. This is directly across from Central Park. The inside photos here, you can see that it's, you can almost not even tell it was the same residence. This is somewhere anybody would be happy to move to, and we're particularly proud of the work that was done here. Go through a few more slides just to give you guys a example of what it looks like. As you can see, this is one of the best-looking properties in our downtown area. We're quite proud of the work we've been able to do there. Also, since this new owner has taken over, we have had zero calls for service at that location, which is relieved a lot of burden on the police department and allowed us to focus on other projects that are more important. If the council has any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
Ashley, would you poll the council for, I'm sorry, were there any public comments before we go to council?
There were zero comments by email and zero by voicemail.
Thank you, Ashley. If you'd poll the council for comments or questions.
Sure thing. Councilmember Pogan Cord?
Yes, who is the person that is buying these homes and re, doing the reconstruction? I've noticed many in the E and D, E and F streets. They're really well-done, and they're beautiful, and pleasing to the eye, that I think, you know, anybody, like you said, would be happy to live in them. But I don't know who's re, redoing them, and I would like to know in case I see them, I could tell.
Yeah, there's, there's a variety, there's a variety of people that are, that are purchasing those and rehabbing those. This, this, this one in particular was a local realtor, who I believe is involved in several, several other projects throughout town. But, you know, we, we have no, no input as to who, who buys these and how that transpires, but several people are involved in rehabbing properties down there right now.
I know, and they're doing an excellent job. It really lifts our spirits here at the city, and, and it's aesthetically pleasing to the eye to see these old houses refurbished. It's really nice, so, thank you.
Councilmember Scribner?
None for me.
Councilmember Wiggins?
Um, no.
Mayor Protim Davies?
None for me.
Mayor Smith?
Just a fantastic job, Aaron, chief, everyone involved, to get this problem removed, and, and what a final result. I think everyone's just amazed and pleased. I'm sure the neighborhood is very happy of the work you've performed. So, all I can say is kudos to everyone involved. Aaron and your crew and, and chief, thank you so much.
Thanks, sir.
Okay, if there's no more comments on this, we'll go to city managers' report. Greg?
Thank you, Mayor Smith. I just, I just want to say how proud I am. Tonight's agenda was a stunning example of good people doing good work here at the city, whether it's police department, economic development, planning, engineering, accounting, public works. All of the employees of the city of Tatchee work collaboratively together with the community to, to enhance our city from, you know, border to border and beyond. So, just very, very proud of all of our employees. Thank you.
Thank you, Greg. Councilmember reports, anything from you, Joan?
Um, not that I am aware, but kudos to our city employees and our police force for keeping Tatchee safe and for the work that they do every day to keep us running. It's appreciated.
Thank you, Joan. Councilmember Scribner, Christina?
I will just echo that we are so grateful for our law enforcement in our city and appreciate the very complicated nature of how they navigate, what they do each and every day and night, and just count me and so many others as those that are standing with you and grateful for the work you're doing on our behalf to keep us safe.
Thank you, Christina. Councilmember Wiggins, Susan?
Well, they've said everything I could possibly think of, and I have to agree with them. Thank you.
Thank you. Council, Mayor Protim Davies, Michael?
No, it's so awesome to be affiliated with all of you and the city and what, how everybody accomplishes their work. Uh, this is just a prime example of this, this house. It's just great-looking and being, being part of our city. I just, again, thank everybody for their hard work and what they, everybody accomplishes. Thank you.
Uh, and with that, I say to everything I heard above from all the other council members, I agree with that too, and thanks to everyone. All right, we are now going to adjourn to closed session. For information regarding the outcome of the closed session, please contact Ashley Whitmore at 661-82-